Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of our Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, the 21st day of February in the year 2025. My name is Marquis. All right, no Mr. Price? All right? No, you were all good today? All right, fabulous. All right.
My professional career, working for a number of elected officials, Mike Hernand- starting with Mike Hernandez, working on the east side, the northeast part of Los Angeles, to then working with Mayor Riordan. I had the privilege of getting to work with a number of wonderful activists, community leaders, for or as he takes on the next step of this chapter in his life in retirement. We're celebrating a man whose career has been defined by his unwavering commitment to public service and community empowerment. Arturo has spent decades championing policies and programs that uplift our city's diverse communities. Most recently, one of purpose and passion. A proud graduate of Cal State LA with degrees in history and Mexican-American studies, he has dedicated his life to serving others with cultural insight and historic understanding. His work as Chief of Staff and Senior Advisor to Councilmember Gil Cedillo saw him managing key policy initiatives, overseeing economic development projects, and leading legislative efforts that have transformed the lives of countless Angelinos. From advancing immigrant rights to championing affordable housing, Arturo's legacy is deeply embedded in the progress of our city. But beyond his professional accolades, Arturo is a mentor and advocate and unwavering force for equity and inclusion. His early career as a bilingual educator and community advocate reflects his deep-rooted belief in the power of education and engagement. He has inspired generations of leaders, and his contributions will continue to resonate far beyond his tenure in public service. And, you know, with such, with so many years of public service, it would only, I mean, we could, we could talk about, there's so many stories that I know each of us could share about our interactions and work with Arturo. But I think it's best to hear it from, as we continue to see that erosion of that experienced leadership, it's, you know, it's, again, it's sad. I'm proud to see. Is something that cannot be replaced. And I'm so grateful, and so congratulations on your well-earned retirement. I'd like to give you the floor.
A lack of words, right? Which is not, I even have, you know, my family's here. I just want to introduce my wife, Cookie. This is my daughter, Vita. My son, Arturo. My niece, Maricela. You know, on a Friday, take their time off. I mean, I even have Hugo Garcia here, who I went to high school with. Good amount of time versus in the state and the state, and that's different. The funniest thing about this, I'll tell you, is that, you know, I was a student activist, community activist, and never thought about having anybody run for office, even though we fought for people to run for office. And the joke that I tell people is, running for Assembly, I threw them out. I told them, "Man, we don't do that. We don't do electoral politics. You know, we're activists." And, you know, eventually, we were able to see that we can do both, and we can really have an impact on, on community by having people elected. So we pushed to have elected folks, and we brought together, like, the biggest Latino caucus, tax. So I just think that I would never have been here versus, you know, everybody starting to move in that direction. I was surprised. And, but I'm not regretful of that because we were able to do several things, both in the state and in the city. And I'm very proud of the work that we did, and I'm very proud of the last five years being at El Pueblo. We need money. So, thank you very much. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Monica, for hosting this for us today, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. Thank you so much.
Sharing what are the things that El Pueblo needs and making sure that you brought those advocacy skills that you learned in community for Council District One for many years, and for some of the team that you have here today as well that was a part of that. Thank you for your.
Just want you to know, you've been effective certainly here locally, the city, the county, the state, and beyond. And your smile, your willingness to listen, and your sense of humor have been a real hallmarks of you, and we love you. We love you. Continued success. Effectively, always for the right reasons, always with, with good policy intent, with trying to make our communities better. But I've seen you operating, all you've given to California and to Los Angeles, you have made our world a better place. Even when we were in the streets railing, shaking our fists, you telling us what a guide path would be, and that victory was possible. And also that the social justice smiling at me. And I felt, okay, I'm gonna be okay. Arturo's here. I have somebody I can talk to who understands. So, thank you for everything that you've been in, and hopefully you take pride in, in, in the state legislator, this council, the county boards, for all the people that followed in the pathway that, that you helped lay in the late 80s and early 1990s. So, thank you so much for your service to the city, and thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, colleague. So many years, really feel. And so, really happy to see all of the friends and families show up today to pay a remark. Congratulations on your well-earned retirement.
Good morning. So you have one minute for the item, that is Item 8 as amended, and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jason, and I'm a smoking scan viewer. Let's start with number eight, man. Come on, man, City Attorney. What are we going on with this fire department payroll issue, man? Come on, man. What you doing, man? You giving them the money, man? Oh, my goodness, man. Come on, bro. What you doing, man? You know, those fire department deserve their money. And how can you, you're not paying their money? They need to get paid fairly. Oh, man. Come on, man. What you doing now, man? You're City Attorney, you cannot pay their money. You cannot pay them fair wages, man? Oh, my goodness. You cannot, you know, ask me to speak any other, other, other languages, man? Oh, my goodness. I'm so tired of you, man. Oh, my God, give me a break, man. Chill down, chill out, man. Chill out, my bro. Come on, man. LAFD deserve their fair wages. You gotta fix their fire, whatever payment issues, man? Oh, my goodness. Now, let's move on to general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
And then, hello, my name is Jason, I'm smoking scan viewer. The other day, I was go down Figueroa Street, eh? And I saw this, this girl was coming walk to me, and he was asking me, man, "Oh, hey, you want a head?" I was like, "No, I don't want a head." And then he was asking me that the smoking's get free.
Okay, so Speaker, I'm gonna ask that you connect this to something within the city's subject matter jurisdiction. So as opposed to Justin An- anecdote. Go ahead.
So, so, the, 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 the other day, I was down in Figueroa Street, but our buses, our buses cannot, cannot service in the bus stop. The Figueroa girls occupied the bus stop. Is that in the, within the jurisdiction of the city? I cannot get on the, on the bus. The bus does not stop on Figueroa Street. Is that within the jurisdiction of the city? Because every single Figueroa girl and from the Council District Eight office, they occupied the whole street, man. So, and then they told me, they, they want a $300. And I was like, I only have $5, because Jason said, "It's only $500. It's only $5, man. It's only $5."
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
So, I don't think that SEQA should ever be exempted for any sort of development in the city of Los Angeles. We are historically an oil field, and everything should require robust environmental testing. The video before us just showed that we have the Super Bowl, the Olympics, the World Cup coming, and I am very concerned as to what expediting development looks like for our need of locals and our most marginalized community members. I think that the city continues to be predatory with development and continues to displace and gentrify some of the most historical neighborhoods with some of the most vulnerable people in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. And what would you like to speak about?
Item number eight, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead with the item first.
Item number eight, I'm supporting number, item number eight. General public comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Sydney, that G-line take a detour, I got surprised when I came to City Hall today. How long is this damn project gonna last, hell? How you gonna get down to Van Nuys City Hall? How are people gonna get down to Van Nuys City Hall? Do you have to take the Victory Bus or the Van Owen Bus? It's gonna be hard. It's gonna be hard for people to get down to either this City Hall or Van Nuys. That's, we don't like it. Sorry about that. They should have done that years ago, the light rail. How come you didn't do it years ago? A week from Sunday, KFWP is turning 100 years old. If you don't know, KFWP's been around for 100 years. Warner Brothers owned it. LaMaya, Ima owns KFWP. I just want to let you know, it's KFWP celebrating 100th birthday next Sunday.
Hi, my name is Junie Wong. I'm part of the Stop the Gondola Coalition, and I would like to oppose the motion for Olympic exemption. I think it doesn't make any sense to exempt Olympic projects because you exclude community input. We also don't even know what exactly needs to be built. Like, there are no clear reasons, no clear projects for why this needs to happen. We're just told that we, like, urgently need to build for the Olympics, but you can't even say what's needed. It's entirely unnecessary. It's a very greedy motion. We don't even know what projects could be considered Olympic. For example, in Chinatown, we are fighting the LA art gondola to Dodger Stadium, which is an inequitable fake transit system that only caters to Dodger fans. We don't know what can pre, we need something to prevent that from being considered an Olympic project, especially because that was never what it was proposed for. So you must prevent pre-existing proposals from being considered Olympic projects just to manipulate them into bypassing the approval process. We don't need the Olympics, and we don't need the gondola.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Just public comment, I suppose.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I came to speak about number five, which has been continued, and just how ridiculous it is that any development would be exempted from SEQA or any other permitting processes, particularly since this so-called "no-build Olympics" that nobody in the city of Los Angeles voted for, except City Council, half of whom are gone or in jail. Yeah. How is it a no-build Olympics when now you're talking about exempting development for the Olympics? But that's what I was going to talk about, but when I walked in today, I saw LAPD Officer Susha Singh, who some of you may know, and got a little activated because this is the same person that spent his holiday break trolling me on Twitter, trying to be anonymous. This no-neck-having motherfucker who, you know, champions child abuse and racism and pedophilia. So, protect and serve.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor. Just public comment.
Wait, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Mr. Groat, you understand what I'm saying. According to Los Angeles Police Department Internal Affairs, they're exempt from accommodating someone under American Disability Act, namely a form. I've asked them to provide the form. According to them, they're exempt. So what did the City Clerk's Office do? Please send us the form in, in Word, and we'll produce it in Braille. According to LAPD, that's generally not gonna happen. Today, the City Clerk's Office provided the Braille to me, and I thanked them for that. I had to file a claim of damages against LAPD for $1 to mandate that they provide that to me in Braille. But according to their Internal Affairs, they're under no legal obligation to do that. The Deputy Clerk, I tried to offer her business card so she could receive it. Their attitude is, they need to call them, and I'm not gonna play that game. Thank you.
So, Speaker, your time's expired, but which form are you referring to? Just so we're on the same page.
It's a personal complaint form, and LAPD, through the captain, says they're not required to provide it to me because then everybody else will ask for it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Candace A. Vic. I just have a general comment.
Okay. And so you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Right. So I'm here because I would like to know about the rent registry. I have sent several emails. Marquis Harris-Dawson, I have been to your office on 87th and Vermont. I have been waiting for your person, Carlos Leon, to get back to me. I would like to know how it came to be, what happens with the money that is collected, who voted for it, how did it come to be? What hap, who gets the additional 3105 that you're charging the homeowner? And who voted for this? Which ballot and which year? Because I didn't, and you guys are charging the homeowner to pay for a rent registry. I have no understanding of it, and I have been calling, and nobody can help me. And so you're over there talking, so you're not even paying attention to what I'm saying because I've been to your office, Marquis Harris-Dawson. I live in your district, and you're not doing shit.
Hello and good morning. My name is Adon Vega, and I'm here for a school project. I attend East College Prep High School, and I would like to propose, propose an idea related to the problem of police brutality in LA County. I'd like to propose an organization that would benefit the victims of police brutality and their families. These include access to an experienced policeman misconduct lawyer and government-funded therapy. I've been working on this project for the past five months and am still open to feedback, any new ideas, to who I may present this to. That is all. Thank you for your time.
So today, I wanted to talk to you guys about veterans and mental health. It's for my school project. I'm a student from a school called East College Prep, Lincoln High School. I meant Lincoln Heights. I just wanted to raise awareness and just to speak on it because our city does have an issue with homelessness crisis, and it does also overlay with veterans. We have about 1,854 veterans homeless in our Los Angeles area, and this is most than any city in the United States. I also wanted to raise awareness for our, our amount of veterans that suffer from PTSD, depression, and anxiety, and we have no way in helping them. We're, we're, every year, we're raising up, like, maybe 11%, 13% in veteran suicides, and this is an issue that I wanted to address and just make aware. Thank you.
Good morning.
Sorry, I haven't been here in a while.
And what would you like to speak to? There's Item 8 and general public comment.
Can you repeat? I'm just kidding. Don't repeat the items. Item 8, please, and general public comment. Item 8 is the firefighter pay, work pay thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, and general public comment, right?
Yes. So, sorry. We'll start your time over. Hold on it for a second. So you have, please speak to the item first, and then we'll give you the minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. The most professional person up there next to the City Clerk and the voting clerk, easily. Only physically next to, it's not like a contest. LAFD, I guess, had an issue with Workday. It's a website. It's something that they make the city employees register for and finagle with when they want to find out how much you're gonna get paid, whether or not they did get paid. And all I hear from people that have to use that shit is that it sucks. I used to work in restaurants, and the online work software always fucking sucked. People didn't get paid randomly. The messages wouldn't go through. People would try to schedule, like, time off, and it just wouldn't register right. So these software, although it saves a lot of paper, oftentimes creates problems that you don't find out about until way later when enough people let you know about it. So maybe instead of championing Workday like you did a month or two ago, you'd be like, "Yeah, it's another software," whatever, and it sucks sometimes. Also, the firefighters, oh wait, I get general public comment, right?
General public comment.
All right. So Monica Rodriguez, I don't know where she is. If you see Monica, let the, let the police know she's missing from the chambers. She likes to, her and other city council members like to pit the public and the people in the city against each other. The police versus the protesters, the firefighters against people like me that come to speak up on the firefighters. Now, I tried to make Monica get back in her seat during public comment, and she decided to be stubborn and chat it up with the firefighters so that she can create some kind of division between me and them. Knowing full well, I'll come here and speak and advocate for them. Because, yo, I'll keep it real, straight up. Yo, LA, we need to cut, we need to put a truce on everything. If you're white, if you're black, if you're a cop, if you're a criminal, listen. Everybody, we need a truce. Fuck it. You wanna do, they're trying to get us to do a race war, some crazy shit. They keep, they keep putting division between us. We need a truce. Come together, the people, all of us, to realize that they're trying to divide us, and we gotta get rid of them. It's that simple. Oh, and listen during public comment. Y'all need to stop fucking talking during public comment. It's bullshit.
Next speaker.
I'm a constituent of CD14. My family has owned a home there since 1911. This woman, who currently identifies herself as Irene Vasquez, is actually Irene Elizabeth Morris. If the city attorney had acted in time in December when I appeared here originally, my father's Chicano archives would have been saved from the Palisades fire. This woman is now attempting to steal my ancestral home that my biological great-grandfather bought over 100 years ago that I've lived in for 20 years. There's a drug tunnel located in CD14 at 3200 East 5th Street. Susanna Lopez from KDL's office had material knowledge of it, and several senior lead officers at Hollandbeck Division also have material knowledge of the underground drug tunnel located in the garage of 3200 East 5th Street in CD14. This woman collaborates with those people. Those people collaborate with the DWP.
Speaker, your time has expired.
General public comment.
Sweet, one minute. Go ahead.
The LA Council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the US. I have never seen an agenda with zero items available to comment on until today. This is a perfect example of the sleaziness, corruption, cowardice, and incompetence of corrupt Marquisi Dawson. Fire demand, fire damage $275 billion, 6,000 homes destroyed. Homelessness is epidemic. The city is broke from incompetence and corruption, with another joke of a homeless count via volunteers versus paid professionals. Yet the corrupt black members of the sleazy council, corrupt Dawson, Price, and Hutt, are profiting with an illegal $3 million sole source versus, open, this, contracts for another stupid art project in Item 1. Investigation coming. Chinese local government officials called mayors. They are all promoted based on how much commerce and jobs they increase into their areas.
I urge you to vote no on 5 when you eventually vote on 5. There is no valid reason to exempt Olympics-related projects from our city's standard review procedures. Procedures exist for a reason. LA 28 had 11 years to prepare for the Games. Our city and residents shouldn't pay the price for incompetence with hastily designed projects with unvetted environmental and social impact. No loopholes. Vote no on 5. Now, general comment. Under the current federal regime, we're gonna see the already fragile social and community services that so many people rely on to continue to crumble. I urge all of you to resist the default reaction to lean on more security, more law enforcement, more militarized police, more deputized militias. These entities do not provide more safety. Militarized policing can't be the plan for the unhoused. It can't be the plan for the climate catastrophe, catastrophe, for healthcare, for education, for food shortages. For food shortages, I'm sorry, for food shortages. We need to invest in our communities, not violence workers.
Speaker, one minute for general. We, I'm keeping track here.
Yeah. Same goes for privatization. The only thing good for privatization is making rich people richer.
Speaker, we need to move on to the next speaker. I'm sorry. Next speaker.
People over profit, people over police.
Yes, I'm speaking on the need to update our film laws.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Tessa Farrell with a very exciting announcement for the American film industry and a call to action for our government. I'm a Hollywood actress turned film pioneer, whose directorial debut movie may be the world's biggest performance by an actress in Hollywood ever, due to the unprecedented process I used to make the movie spawning over half a decade. This movie will inspire audiences worldwide to believe in themselves and remind us the importance of coming together as a community. It received 18 awards nominations, has had hundreds of festival invites, and six world records pending with Guinness. But we've hit a roadblock with the MPA and Guinness verifying these titles. Since I was one of the first people to ever explore the emerging capabilities of smartphone cameras, shooting without a budget, crew, script, permits, or not even knowing I would later use the footage in a movie, I've been unable to get these finalized. I've tried to pay for permits and SAG agreements retroactively, but have been unable to do so. We must update our laws to match the capabilities of artists with today's technology since art is essential for the survival of our species. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name's Phyllis Ling. Item number 5 has changed significantly since it was heard in Plumb Committee. It's three pages long. I'm against Olympics exemptions, and I like to raise the issue of how it would threaten housing by allowing residentially zoned and entitled properties to convert, be converted to other uses besides residential. Everyone talks about the housing shortage, so why should, why would you make it worse by putting something like an ill-conceived gondola with no real funding plan on and over land that is zoned or entitled for housing? Just last week, a YIMBY group filed a lawsuit against the city for not having enough housing in the zoning code. This ordinance on exemptions could make things worse. Beyond the gondola, people have concerns about whether hotels are going to be built instead of housing. Again, no gondola, it's a huge liability to our city and taxpayers. Thank you.
Good morning. And what would you like to speak to?
We'll do Item 8 and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item 8 is regard to issues incurred by our new payroll system, Workday. This system was introduced this past year, and in my opinion, the one that we were on before Workday, the website was a little more intuitive. It made more sense to me. People said that it wasn't up to date enough, and that's why we need to change. I'm really curious if there were maybe some dealings with people who run the company that owns Workday, if that's, that's why we switched. Because to be honest, it seems like they've, there's been a lot of technical issues. I know the department I work for doesn't really have anything good to say about it. And I just really appreciate City Controller Mejia's diligence on this issue, and I think you would all do well to look to his office to see how y'all should be behaving because he's one of the few electeds I still respect.
General public comment.
When it, when it, when it comes to SEQA, y'all be like, "Damn, 28." And we be like, "Y'all had time to plan, you're late. You've known since 2017 about it. And honestly, the people'd rather do without it. The people need your help, the ones who live here. But your priorities have been made clear. You care more about money from out of town. But it's not too late to vote this item down. Whatever happened to the promise to not build a thing just for these Games? I know that Olympics is what you all were saying. Now you wanna fast-track construction, you must be playing. It's the interest of the people you are all betraying. Garcetti lied, and Mayor Bastid, too. Now, counsel, it's on you. We're mad because it's looking like your decision is made. You should cancel LA 28."
The ordinance in number 5 needs to be rewritten, so I'm glad that it's not being dealt with today. We can't know whose interests this ordinance aims to slip through, but we do know that this motion needs to be rewritten. It's too broad and gives carte blanche to anyone who wants to run roughshod over the necessary checks and balances in place to prevent corruption and abuse. It's a Trojan horse for who knows how many parties to elude oversight and accountability and to jam through projects that otherwise would be disallowed for myriads of valid reasons. Preserve our city's rich history instead of bowing down and catering to the rich. Thank you.
Hey there. Johnny Coleman with No Olympics LA. I guess a few things, since we're not gonna be voting on it today, let's back up and like reconsider if we can actually host the Olympics. I personally don't, do not believe there's a no or low-impact version of this, but given the circumstances, we have two choices right now, right? We can rebuild LA with intention or try to host the Olympics. We can't do both. What will probably end up happening is we'll try to do both, and it'll both turn out to be complete fucking disasters. The, the city signed one of the worst contracts in human history. Y'all need to look into that. It sucks. But if you're gonna do it, you cannot give developers carte blanche to do whatever they want and upend whatever measly regulations we have today. So cancel the Olympics, don't give carte blanche to developers, and why the fuck are we letting Casey Wasserman, who's been on the Epstein plane 10 times, be the recovery czar for LA? czar for LA? Thanks.
Our City Controller, Mr. Kenneth Mejia, and as he is an elected official of the city, I'm asking the clerk to turn off the clock. Mr. Mejia, the floor is yours.
No, it'll be like 30 seconds, but I just wanna say thank you, Chair, and thank you to City Council for your support on this issue, item eight. You know, the fire department, like many departments across the city, is struggling from understaffing, from back office positions for critical services like accounting and human resources, and my office is working hard with fire personnel, ITA, the CAO, to fix these problems that have been lingering. And finally, I want to thank the fire department for all their heroic work during the fires last month, and the work that they do every day across the city. You have our backs, and we want to let you know that we have yours, so I appreciate you all, and I thank you City Council for your support, and yeah, have a good Friday, thank you.